Juan.
You're up, Dan.
Good evening and thank you for viewing. Am I, wait, am I videoed? Did I lose? There we go. Okay, sorry. Good evening and thank you for viewing the December 8th, 2020 meeting of the Arcata Planning Commission. The Planning Commission meeting is being held as a webinar in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. I want to start by thanking the community and visitors to Arcata and the county for their efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19. We are leading by doing. We are masking up to protect each other and the most vulnerable in our community and practicing social distance. These two fundamental acts of social responsibility will help flatten the curve, keep ourselves and neighbors healthy, and keep our businesses open, not to mention supporting frontline essential workers that serve us daily. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual item, there are two ways to do so. If you are logged in onto the Zoom meeting webinar, click on, raise your hand on the right-hand side of the screen. When it is time for public comment on that item you wish to speak to, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. You can access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Spread plus star nine on your phone. This will raise your hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak. The clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. And number three, you may also submit written comment via email address to PC@cityofarcata.org. Your email will be forwarded to the Planning Commission, but commissioners may not receive your comments before deliberating or rendering a decision if the decision is made the day of your comment. With that, we will call this meeting to order. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
Commissioner Figaro?
Here.
Commissioner Visage Delcock?
Here.
And Chair Tagney?
I'm also here.
And Vice Chair Mayor.
I'm here too.
Okay. We will, let's see, move on now, pardon me, to our public comment. Sorry, our consent. Where are we, David? We will move on to our public comment. Do we have oral communications? There we go. Do we have any oral communications? And are we all frozen? David's muted.
I'm sorry, I am muted. We have no attendees, so there are no oral communications.
Okay, all right, thank you. And now we can move on to our consent calendar. And the only item on our consent calendar this evening is to approve our regular meeting minutes from October 27th, 2020. If we have no corrections, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, Commissioner Barstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Figaro?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Visage Delcock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Tagney?
Yes. Thank you, David. And now we move on to our public hearings. The first item this evening is to approve Planning Commission Resolution Number PC-20-03, a recommendation to the city, to the Arcata City Council on Land Use Code Text Amendments. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening. My name is Joe Maitier, Senior Planner with the City of Arcata Community Development Department. Before you tonight is a Planning Commission Resolution 20-03. It would be a recommendation to the City Council to take up ordinance for land use code text amendments. This item, a couple of these items were before the planning commission. We introduced the concept to you earlier this year back in September. And there are three components to this resolution and subsequently the ordinance that the City Council will consider a later date. The first item would be the Cannabis Innovation Zone. And as you are aware, there's Area 1 and Area 2. There is a limit on the number of use permits in Area 2. At currently, there are 20 use permits that are available for commercial cannabis activities in Area 2 of the Cannabis Innovation Zone. We have 17 use permits that have been issued by the Planning Commission for those activities in Area 2. And this, we went to the City Council earlier this summer and they suggested increasing that cap from 20 to 30. And so that is the, the recommendation within the ordinance that you'll find as an Exhibit 1 of Attachment A of your resolution. The other item would be clarification of the term cultivation. And we discussed this earlier again. It would be to pretty much define that cannabis plant nurseries are not considered cultivation. We're using part of the California Department of Food and Agricultural definition. And the city, if you recall, does have some limitations on cultivation area. And we really wanted to be kind of the added value, the industrial manufacturing distribution, and not necessarily the cultivation as a main theme for the Cannabis Innovation Zone. So the idea was to set some limits there. But we found that it was kind of a little bit confusing having the the definition of cultivation include from seed to clones all the way up to full mature plants. So you'll see that as one of the items that we're recommending as a text amendment to the code. Basically, again, to clarify that plant nurseries aren't considered cultivation to full flower, so that any of those plant nursery areas would not be required to meet the cultivation area requirements for the Cannabis Innovation Zone. The third item is something new that we haven't brought forward to the Planning Commission before. And that is the Land Use Code applicability section. There's a text amendment that staff identified basically through this summer. And the applicability section of Land Use Code 9-10-040 outlines certain areas of how the code, the zoning ordinance is applicable. And there's a section that does already identify local agencies. It might be a water district or a state agency or even a federal agency as well. And how those activities would be viewed through the land use code. And ironically, the City of Arcata was not identified as one of those entities that could be exempted. And we have a long history of projects that we do that are, according to the general plan, they go through the City Council for approval. We have to set aside funds for that capital improvement plan. And so it could be any of our parks and recreation areas. It could be routine maintenance or, but in this instance, this summer, we, the city acquired portions of the horse cycle track, which was private property adjacent to the community forest. The city acquired that. There is a longstanding bicycle mountain bike trail out there. And it was not really designed by anybody. It was some enthusiasts going out there with their bike and a shovel and, and kind of kicking around the dirt. And working with the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association, they proposed a plan to kind of renovate that trail, decommission a lot of the trail work and stuff. And we realized that a hillside development permit would be required. And so we went ahead and processed that and issued that this summer. And what we proposed to do is to have some text amendment that would exempt the approval, permit approval, a disapproval process from the city, but it would not exempt us from the code itself, just the permit process. And we support that because we feel that it is in the best interest of the city, community, and their fiscal responsibility to be able to, to go ahead and complete these projects that benefit our community in a timely manner. Included in the resolution are recommended sequoia exemption, California Environmental Quality Act, general rule exemption. And there are identified different items. We do use permits require compliance with California Environmental Quality Act. We adopted a mitigated negative declaration when we established the Cannabis Innovation Zone, capital improvement projects. And when these large projects are reviewed and approved by the City Council, there's compliance with California Environmental Quality Act. And we also require that the city-initiated projects do comply with the general plan and the land use, land use development standard policies themselves. And in closing, I would like to recommend the Planning Commission to adopt Planning Commission PC 20-03 that you'll find as Attachment A. Included in that attachment and that resolution is Exhibit 1, draft ordinance 1540 that will be forwarded to the City Council for consideration once and if the Planning Commission does adopt this. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know the director's available too to answer any questions you might have, but feel free to ask away. Thank you.
Can I just make one additional point? And that was a great, great staff report, Joe. I think the one point that I wanted to make sure that the commission understood also about this proposed amendment regarding the procedural change for city projects is that those projects would still be subject to design review. And so I know that when the land use code was adopted, there was a lot of concern about city projects around that time. You know, there were a lot of projects, major projects, you know, such as the community center that were being built that, you know, the, the designer review commission at the time, you know, really had some, some proactive input on. And so this also accepts from that exemption, this change accepts from that exemption, design review. So city projects would still go for design review.
Okay, thank you, David. So are there commission questions on the staff report? Judith?
Um, yeah, thank you for clarifying that about the design review. That, that was my impression as well. But I was kind of wondering if, if the city projects are subject to design review, but not to any permitting requirements from the city, at what point would the design review be triggered? And when would the design review need to get public input? And all that stuff, because, you know, normally the thing that triggers the design review is some request for a permit. But if there's no permit request, then when does the design review happen?
Yeah, good question. Thank you for that. If it is a city-initiated project, there would be a review process established that would have to go through either the committees, usually filters through the department, and then it might go through a committee. Let's say the Recreation Committee has something that they want to propose or the Forest Committee. And then those would have to go through the City Council as well. But we would initiate that at the earliest possible point to begin the design review process according to the land use code itself. There, you know, as a permit itself, that's how we would process it. In some cases, those do require a building permit. And the building permit not, would not be issued until the appeal period has been exhausted on any designer view. And I do want to point out that the code text amendment that the director mentioned about designer view, the proposed text amendment doesn't exempt the coastal development permit requirements as well. So I want to make sure that the public and the planning commission is aware of that as well. I'm not sure, did I answer your question? Maybe the director has a more pointed answer?
Okay, yeah. Could I just ask for a clarification? So the example that you gave was a trail in the community, community forest, which unless it involves a bunch of earth moving, I don't think would require a building permit. And so I'm still not clear exactly, I, I'm not clear. And, and normally it wouldn't require design review in and of itself either. So I'm still a little bit confused about how that design review, review trigger would work. If there's no
The, the designer view, you're absolutely right. Some projects don't require designer view. So it would still be subject to the designer view section. And if a project isn't subject to designer view, then it wouldn't, the project wouldn't receive designer view.
Right, okay.
All the exception does is say that if, if a designer view permit would otherwise be triggered, that section that we're adding doesn't exempt the project from designer view. So some projects are going to have designer view. There are different levels. There's an administrative level. There's a zoning administrator level. And then there's planning commission level. And then in addition, the code says that if there's a permit that's being issued, you know, by a higher body, that higher body can take the, the design review as well, any of the permits that are delegated to lower authority. And so, you know, it's, it's just dependent on the project and the nature of it. Generally speaking, if it's a, you know, a large project, a new building or something like that, it's going to have a higher review authority. If it's something small like a, you know, a fence or a, you know, a trail, it may not have any design review at all. So that's, that's very astute observation.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm just trying to get my head around, you know, when does the public get to weigh in? Is there any public noticing at all? And it, it sounds like basically it wouldn't change any of that except for your, we would trust your department to do it in a timely manner.
That's correct. If it goes to a zoning administrator hearing or a planning commission hearing, it receives the notice and the full public input process. And if it was a larger project, such as the community center project that I pointed out earlier, there'd probably be a community design element to that as well.
Anybody else? It's like John's going?
Yeah. I, I don't have anything to say about the actual verbiage, but on the, on the printout of a, a attachment A Exhibit 1 that I have packet page 12, in where it says Section 2, it talks about a strike through and bold double underscore text. And there is none of that. So it's not, it's not obvious what's been changed in the text.
Yes, thanks for pointing that out, Commissioner Barstow. So if we go to packet page 12 under Section 2, Item C, the permit requirements. The item that is deleted, there's actually a very minor change there. The last sentence says Area 2 is limited to 30. There should be, if it would have, have acknowledged the, the proper view on this. It would have had a strikeout at 20 and then a double underscore under 30. So 30, so there should be a 20 strikeout and 30 there. Under D1, Section 3, we also noticed the same issue there. And at this point, it's pretty much the harvested plant. The, the sentence ends at cultivation does not include the area where drying, drying or storing of harvested plant. I'll go ahead and verify that. And I can see if I can pull that up and share with the, the commission so they are fully aware of that. While I pull that up, are there any other questions that the commission may have?
That was a, a great catch, Commissioner Barstow. I think what happened was when the Word document got converted to a PDF, it accepted the changes. Not exactly sure why it accepted some and not others, but I'm glad you caught that. Thank you.
I've, I've got a quick question. So in respects to the, the land use code change. So in regards of their, you know, in regards of what Commissioner Mayor was saying. So when there isn't a permit that isn't needing to be applied for, essentially it's going to be handled through a ministerial permit over the counter. Sort of permit, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, it's really dependent on the type of activity. And so for, for example, a, a trail, a trail project, if we don't move enough dirt on a trail project to cause a grading permit to be required,
Sure.
then there may not be any permit at all. A lot of the work that we do in the road right of way, for example, doesn't require a permit. At the same time, there may be a project that's happening in the road right of way. That's, let's say, a street beautification project as well. That doesn't necessarily trigger a city permit. There's no building permit or anything like that. But we would still want that to go to, you know, some kind of a community review. And so we might have that have a, go through a designer review process anyway. Certain other projects, I mean, the, the way the design review section is written, it actually gives a lot of flexibility to the directors of engineering and community development to make any project, whether or not it's considered, you know, trigger for designer view or not, go to designer view, depending on the particulars of that situation. And so, you know, for example, we had a, we had a, a small fence project that would have affected the circulation of the community center. And as we reviewed it at the staff level, you know, I, you know, I just conveyed that while I have the authority to make the decision, I didn't feel comfortable making the decision for approval the way that it was designed. And it could either be redesigned, so I felt that comfort level. Or we could take it to the planning commission and have, you know, that full body with notice to the public and, you know, so on and so forth, make that final decision. So there's an example where we had to use a little bit of discretion on the front end to, to decide, you know, where that permit fell. Ultimately, the project was redesigned and the fence that was installed didn't affect the circulation. And so I felt okay approving it according to the, the administrative procedures that we have available to us. Understood, thank you.
Would the commission like me to share my screen on the code text amendment for the ordinance?
Yes, please.
So here's the section here where it identifies, do you see, do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So there's the strikeout and the double underscore under Section 2, Item C, for increasing the number of use permits from 20 to 30 in Area 2. And then Section 3 below adds a slight definition to exempt out the clones, immature plants and seeds and not to the full full flower of that definition for cultivation.
So if we have a motion tonight, it'd be great to have these amendments to this ordinance incorporated in that motion. The other thing I wanted to say real quick, I, I was going to mention earlier in the staff report is that the commission did look at this, I believe it was not this past September that just went by, but the September before and made recommendations to the City Council, several recommendations on how to amend this cannabis ordinance. And ultimately, the council came back and said, we just want to amend the total number. We don't want to go into all the other recommendations that the planning commission made. I don't have a list of what those were on the top of my head. You guys did take, you, you, your body did take a action through resolution. And so if you're filtering through your papers and you find that resolution, you say, hey, wait a minute. You know, they didn't bring back all the things that we said. It's because we specifically got direction from the council not to. And so we, we can explore that if you're interested, but I just wanted to acknowledge that in advance.
I'd like to ask one question. It, it seems a little unusual to me that so much of this is about the cannabis discussion, and then there's this additional part about city projects. Is it odd that those are lumped together in one resolution versus two separate topics?
The, you know, it does get confusing the more sections of the code that you amend at one time. You know, and, and in particular, you know, this was, you know, a heavy, heavier edit in one section than another. And so it's easy to, to lose track of that smaller edit. But it's not unusual. It's all, it all falls, falls under Title IX of the municipal code. And so it's, it's not unheard of to make, you know, amend multiple sections of the municipal code at once. You know, we, we are doing this in part out of the, you know, to save on the, the noticing requirements, the, or the noticing, the cost of noticing and just to be efficient with our time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on this resolution? And if not, do we have a motion? And shall we get rid of the shared screen so we can all see each other again?
We do have two public members in the in attendance now.
Okay, so let's open this up to public comment.
I think they're both here for the next item, and I don't see any hands being raised.
Okay, so we can close public comment. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'm ready to make a motion if everyone's ready.
I'll second that.
I'll make a motion to approve PC 20-02 recommending to the Arcata City Council with the amendments that were highlighted and read.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. David, would you like to manage the roll call?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll, I'll just note for the record that that was PC 2003. Commissioner Visage Delcock?
Yes.
Commissioner Barstow?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Figaro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Tagney?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. And now we're going to move on to a business item of which we have two, the first being Local Coastal Program Update Number 5, Sea Level Rise. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chair Tagney, thank you. Pull up a PowerPoint presentation. Please let me know if you can see the full screen version or the slide advanced version.
It looks to me like it's the slide advanced version is.
Try it one more time.
That looks like a full screen is.
Did you want to show us the slideshow or did you want us to see the sidebars as well?
I want to show you the slideshow. I want to show you the slideshow. Okay, let's try this again. Can you see the slideshow or can you see the slide advance?
We see just the slideshow. It looks great.
Good.
Okay, perfect. All right, still trying to uh learn some chops here on Zoom. So um, I do have a, a brief slideshow uh to, to go through some of the, the context for. Uh, the materials that were in your packet tonight. Tonight, we're uh taking into consideration. The coastal land use element, the policy part of the local coastal program. Uh, that deals with sea level rise. Um, we've been bringing forward several sections of the zoning ordinance over the past several planning commission meetings. And the intent was to bring forward the zoning ordinance for sea level rise. Um, but our, our uh. Process for editing those documents uh put the uh policy portion, this local coastal element first. And so I brought that forward as well uh beforehand. Um, do want to uh note that uh this is sort of shifting gears as a result. So whereas before we've been looking at, you know, each of the different sections and looking at the actual zoning ordinance. Uh, the zoning ordinance is very sparse and uh goes directly to uh how um. Development would be regulated to implement the policy document. Uh, so now instead we're looking at the, the policy document itself and um, you know, it's a little more verbose. Uh, goes into a little bit more detail on background, why we set the policy document. Um, you know, I'll note that uh, you know, there are several blanks, blanks. This is still a working project. Uh, work in progress and we're still working on some of the detail. But I felt comfortable that it was complete enough that we could bring this forward and uh share it with you and the, and the public. Uh, the other thing I want to note is that this uh document that you have before you in your packet reflects the. Uh, sort of second iteration after receiving some, some feedback from the coastal commission. Uh, we've been working closely with coastal commissions, uh local staff and staff in, in San Francisco. Uh, to make sure that, you know, we've resolved as many um uh differences of opinion about how to bring this local coastal plan forward. And make it comport with the coastal act as possible. We've been doing a really good job at getting through all of those uh issues. Um. But what I will say is that some of the items in this document haven't come to complete resolution with the coastal commission. We're still in. Uh, version revision. Um, and so what I would say is that, you know, um, this is reviewed by the coastal commission, but, you know, not sort of. Blessed, if you will, by the local staff. Um, you may have taken the time over the weekend to read through this, but let me just go ahead and set out sort of the, the underlying principles by walking through this. Uh, local coastal program policy um slideshow here. So. One of the biggest questions I think I constantly get, you know, why is the city taking this approach? Why is the city? Not taking the most conservative approach because what we've discussed with the public, what we received comment on and the, the documents that we've been bringing forward, the conceptual plans. And ultimately, this policy document. As a result of that public engagement has really driven us towards a um. A measured approach. Um, and I, I distinguish this term measured, uh whereas many people use the term managed retreat. I use measured retreat intentionally to try and segregate these two concepts. And to really have a conversation about what does that actually mean to us locally? Okay, so why aren't we project, using the most conservative estimates? You know, a lot of people are really uh, you know, this is, this is an existential crisis for them. Um, having the threat of rising sea levels, uh flooding infrastructure, flooding homes. The impacts that they're seeing worldwide, this is scary stuff to a lot of people. Uh, the projections, the worst case scenario projections are admittedly frightening. And so if we look at these projections and we start to think about. You know, you know, what are we potentially up against? Um, then, you know, it's, and then we map that onto the, to the uh, to the city to see, well, what does that actually look like? It is frightening. So let me just show you here. I don't expect you to digest this whole. Graphic here, but um I'll just orient you real quick and you've seen it before, but for the public who hasn't seen it before. This is out of the Ocean Protecting Council's uh latest uh scientific um estimates for sea level rise. Published just years, a couple of years ago. Um, and what it does is it takes a, a high emission scenario and a low emission scenario and plots that out over the course of. You know, now through twenty one, twenty fifty, one fifty. Um, it looks at different likelihoods of elevation gain and sea level rise. There's a likely range. This is uh where, you know, if you uh, you know, run, run the models, this is where it's, it's likely to end up sixty cents, six percent probability. Uh, but most people want to take, especially for uh, you know, significant infrastructure or critical infrastructure. A more cautious approach. And so there's the one in twenty chance, five percent probability that it'll exceed uh meet or exceed that. And then the one in two hundred chance. So this is the, the, you know, pretty, pretty uh conservative approach, one in two hundred chances of point five percent probability. That it meets this, so point five percent poly probability by twenty one hundred. The sea level will rise by seven point six feet at the north spit. The most, the worst case scenario, this H plus plus scenario in the final column here. Um, it doesn't even have a probability associated with it. It's essentially a complete catastrophic meltdown. And by twenty one hundred, the expectation is that if that scenario plays out. Then we'd be at around eleven feet of sea level rise. So why aren't we taking the most conservative estimate in our planning? Um, sorry, should have zoomed in on that so you could see it a little better. This is twenty one hundred. Uh, likely scenario for feet. Uh, one in twenty, uh one in twenty chance is five feet, one uh. Uh, twenty chance is seven point six feet and the H plus plus scenario is eleven feet. So this is why. The H plus plus scenario at twenty one hundred. Essentially would encompass an area. Almost paralleling or almost to the extent of this red line here. I know Arcade is a little hard to see back here, but I'll orient you. Here's uh, you know, the. Uh, here's a claw plate sewer treatment plant. Here's the peninsula that we've uh referred to. Here's downtown Arkea. Uh, this is the um subdivisions to the west side of the city. Here's all of the subdivision on the bottom and uh, uh, this right here is essentially where the. Uh, Arcade Gateway areas. Uh, all the way out to, you know, our newly annexed creekside. So there's. A pretty good reason why we're not using this as a planning scenario. If we're anticipating eighty percent of the city to be inundated because of this H A, H plus plus scenario. That's not a planning scenario. When we look at the probabilities associated with these various elevations and sea level rise and we plot them out to uh. Say twenty one hundred. Even six feet, two meters of sea level rise. Uh, at twenty one hundred as a two percent probability. To meet or exceed that, two percent probability. Uh, we've discussed this before in study session and I think the, you know, I tried to use an analogy to, to gambling. You know, if I gave you a game, a gambling game and I said, hey, put your money down. You have a ninety eight percent chance of winning this game. You would probably do it. You would probably say, I'm, I'm willing to accept that. So two percent probability. Is a, you know, fairly conservative approach already. Assuming that at, by twenty one hundred, we'll be at six feet of seal over rise. And for the most part. This is what our planning scenario revolves around. A very low probability of exceedance by twenty one hundred eighty years from now. But still a possibility. Uh, to get hyper conservative, to get into that point five percent, that half a percent range. It gets you to seven and a half feet, close to eight feet. You know, that's over here on this probability dial. So if you were planning a new hospital. Or, you know, uh, you know, new residential subdivision, something that was going to put a lot of people in harm's way. You probably want to use this higher probability, uh, you know, threat level. Uh, risk level for your, for your planning scenarios. Um. But again, we're not using the H plus plus scenario, which is way off the charts, even less than a tenth of a percent of probability of occurring. And this table doesn't even include the H plus plus scenario. They don't put probabilities around it. So. You know, so we're looking at, you know, one to two feet of, uh, I'm sorry, one to two feet, absolute certain by twenty one hundred. There's a hundred percent probability of that happening. Um, but we're likely to get more. And if you look at this graphic, uh, what I want to draw your attention to is um. You know, some, some of the, the, the uh features that aren't really evident at first glance. What this map shows you is in blue. What the sea level rise would theoretically inundate without obstructions if it grew by a half a meter. So, you know, uh, one and a half feet. And then if it grew by a meter and a half, close to five feet, it would inundate out to this yellow line. So the first thing I want to point out is that the majority of the peninsula. Is at this meter and a half level. So even taking into consideration, you know, no additional. Uh. Um, protection for the peninsula. If you did nothing else. The majority of that peninsula is already high and dry up to a meter and a half. The other thing I want to point out is that, and this is kind of on the, on the flip side, is that at a meter and a half. We're starting to get backwater flooding that goes through a significant proportion of town. And we've, in study sessions, we've also looked at, you know, what does this mean? What does it mean to have the creek backed up to Eleventh Street or Seventeenth Street? There's a lot of uh neighborhood flooding that's going to happen as a result of that as well. And so even though these areas are high and dry and not in the direct impact of the flood area of the inundation area. There's still going to be regional effects. And so we have a regional approach to, to those solutions. Um. I guess the other thing I wanted to uh point out about um, you know, the, the way that this uh graphic, you know, what this graphic shows us is that. And just to refresh people's memories that, you know, with this uh meter and a half, you know, five feet, six feet of sea level rise. The inland extent of inundation essentially follows the footprint of the historic bay. In eighteen seventy, the US Geological Society mapped the uh bay. And that map extent before it was dyked uh basically followed the same, same contours here. And so it's, it's just a sort of unique characteristic away about the way that the elevations work in our uh neck of the woods. That if you breach the dikes right now here and today, because it's so flat, you would get about the same extent of inland. Uh, inundation as you will, when we've had six feet of sea level rise. So that's important to keep in mind too. It's very unique feature uh for. Um, you know, for our region. So. I just wanted to kind of hit these couple of points here. Um, because I think because of the conflation between sea level rise, the ocean is rising. And the impacts associated with that, um, you know, hazards associated with uh, uh, you know, hundred year storm events or, you know, so on and so forth. The idea of sea level rise and um, and hazard. It's conflated and there are two separate things. We need to keep them as separate things and recognize. That we're, we're planning for different scenarios. They're related. I'm not trying to say they're not related. But the approach to a planning scenario. For hazard mitigation or disaster response is completely different from an urban development. An urban development planning approach. And so the goal of planning urban development for climate adaptation is not disaster response. Um, disaster response would say, you know, hey, you know, if this thing opened up a big sinkhole, let's move everybody out immediately. Let's get everybody to safety, rush to do it right now. We need to save as many lives as possible. We have time with sea level rise planning. We have time. It's not disaster response. The goal of planning urban development for climate adaptation is not hazard mitigation. We're not trying to ensure that uh, you know, buildings won't uh, you know, burn. Uh, that, you know, they uh, you know, that, that they have all the fire alarms or we're, you know, hardening or, or whatever. Uh, that would come along with hazard mitigation planning. It's a different goal with hazard minute mitigation planning than it is with long, long range planning. And that is what the goal uh that we're approaching climate adaptation with uh. With our sea level rise mitigation or other climate adaptation planning scenarios. Um, this idea that you have long range planning. Uh, allows you now recognizing the uh, the timeframes that we're dealing with. Uh, to set yourself up for success. And so, you know, what does that look like? Well, long range planning, you know, we have. Time to make the shift and that's coming back to what I said at the beginning, the reason why we're calling this measured retreat. We have time to make the shift. And so what the document that I gave to you uh in your packet uh attempts to do is all of the bullet points here. First off, we're conveying the knowledge that we have. Um, this is relatively new uh in terms of uh, you know, our. Our understanding, our deeper understanding and the, and the public consciousness of climate change. We need to convey that information and continuously convey that information. We also need to transfer responsibility. And so if you look through the first couple of policies. What we're telling people in our issuance of coastal development permits and what we had encouraged the coastal commission to do as well. Is to really educate people uh about the uh risks of developing in these areas. And to understand the uh financial decisions that they're making when they decide to do that. And then transfer responsibility to those entities. So requiring that they acknowledge and record covenants on their property. Uh, that will then go on to uh inform future purchasers of that property as well. So. There's also a lot of uh policy in, in this document that um allows for a more flexible interpretation or, or consideration. Of when is it appropriate to, to build in this zone? The second piece of this is really to set long-term plans to convert uses. We don't have, we're not responding to a disaster. We're not planning for, you know, hazard mitigation planning scenario. Uh, that's likely to occur on a, a return interval that, you know, is, you know, in, in the, you know. Range of years. We're talking about something that's decades out that we can start to plan for. And so let's set long-term plans to convert these uses. Let's start to give um incentives through land use entitlement. To these properties to convert to uh, to activities that have less uh inherent risk. And so an area that's currently designed for, let's say, uh residential. Let's start to give those residential properties other uses that encourage them to transition out of residential so that people aren't living there. When the sea level rises such that uh, you know, a hundred year storm event is going to flood their houses. We have time to do this. Let's start doing that now. Uh, we need to focus on infrastructure. The uh graphic that I showed where uh the uh tidal extent flows up to Seventeenth Street. The fact that we have a, you know, currently a wastewater treatment plant that is in this uh inundation, uh inundation zone. Uh, the fact that we have a highway that connects our major cities that connects us to the rest of the world, for example. Uh, that is in this inundation zone. Means that we need to focus on infrastructure and it's not just the people's problem who happen to have property in that area. It's the entire city's problem. It's the entire state's problem. And infrastructure is a key piece to how we manage um our response to, to sea level rise. Um, in addition, we need to allow for a responsible risk. Uh, the two percent probability of exceeding six feet by twenty one hundred. I think most um. Private investment would take that risk on. Um, I don't think it's an acceptable risk for uh something like a fire station where, you know, that's a public service. Um, right now we have our courtyard in the sea level uh inundation zone. We have a town, the uh wastewater treatment plant cookers on that same property. That's something that we need to start planning to move out of that zone so that if there is a disaster, if there is something that we need. That's something that we need to start planning to move out of that zone so that if there is a disaster, if there is something that we need, um. You know, the equipment that's down there for, uh, that it's not in a zone where, you know, where it's at risk. And so we have to allow for responsible risk taking. Um, if a. Private landowner says, hey, look, you know, I'm willing to, you know, uh, you know, invest in this because I have a five-year, uh, return on my investment. Uh, and, and my break even, you know, is such that, uh, it makes sense for me to invest in this property. Then, um, maybe we don't need to look at the entire, uh, life. Uh, span of that building and assess risks out to that entire, uh. A hundred year lifespan or whatever it happens to be for that particular building. Maybe we can accept that, uh, that higher level of risk for that investment. Obviously, we want to invest where it makes sense, though. Um, you know, we've developed a strategy that. Splits up the zones and in the, uh, in this inundation zone. So that some areas are, uh, retreating sooner than others. Um, and so I'm not suggesting that we go and try and, you know, protect every stitch of land, but that we, uh, protect that. Uh, that is feasible and that makes sense to. In addition, we have a lot of vulnerable populations in this area. And if we set policies that essentially. Uh, disallow, you know, uh, reconstruction of those properties or, you know, uh, have. Uh, policies that, uh, you know, create fire sale of those properties. Uh, that weakens the, the market value of those properties. The people who are going to get left in the lurch are the people that are living there right now, the low income, uh, people that are living in, in those areas. And then lastly, we really attempt in this document to, to make sure that we're working regionally. Um, not as, not just as I'd mentioned about, you know, considering this as the entire city's problem. So if there was going to be a tax levy to, you know, help the sea level rise. It wouldn't just be an assessment district in that, uh, inundation zone. It would be citywide. But we're also taking on, uh, measures to work countywide, work with Caltrans and other. Utilities that have, uh, significant investment in these areas that are, uh, at risk. So that is the PowerPoint. Um, I could share it again if anybody wants to go back to that, but, um, I did want to draw your attention to. Uh, attachment able to staff report beginning on page seventeen. Um, I want to note that I did find one correction already, uh. And under unpacked page nineteen, under the heading Retreat. It states that on that second paragraph, that retreat will be initiated in a second phase and seal of a rise adaptation zone one. Zone one comprises urban development on her store fill prison dating the early eighteen hundreds. Uh, should read early nineteen hundreds. Um, and then with that, uh, you know, I'll, I'll open it up to, uh, deliberation or questions. Um, I could talk about the. Way that the, the document is structured. Uh, such that it deals with finding and locating development hall, seal every rise adaptation zones. Um, and then it breaks it down by zone one, zone two, and then takes on special topics for, um, visual resources. Uh, agricultural water quality and so on and so forth.
Uh, David, as this is a business item, you're not looking for anything but feedback at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's no action on this item per se, um, but it's certainly an opportunity to allow the public to, uh, provide feedback. And, uh, planning commission to, you know, weigh in on, on the topic as well.
Okay, so let's start with planning commission. Uh, are there questions or comments, discussion items? From anybody? Judith has her hand up.
Hi, um, I have a lot of comments, but before, um, that, and I think I'll hold off on, on those for a little bit. Um, I had a question, um, the zoning maps that would go along with this. Um, which we were hoping to see at some point proposed. When do you think they will be available? For review, at least sort of informal review before the, um, public hearings on the drafts?
Informal review, um.
A- as in something like this?
Oh, yes. Um, okay, yeah, no, I, I definitely think that in January, we'll be able, at the latest, we'll be able to bring them. Um, actually, your, your next meeting is scheduled for the twenty second and, um, I think there's an item to consider canceling that. Uh, that meeting, so January.
Okay, um, and. Just, just, um, so we have some idea. In, in the peninsula right now, most of those residential areas. I think you said before were residential medium density and your draft, um, continues. Um, to list those as residential medium density. Is that true? Or is that what you're thinking right now?
Yeah, that's, uh, we haven't proposed a change in that, uh, zoning district at this point, um. The, uh. That is true.
Oh, okay, so build out there would presumably allow for. Um, any of those single family homes to be converted to residential medium density. Uh, apartments. Is that correct? Cause a bunch of those.
I think the majority.
Are, are single family homes, but in medium density zoned areas. Is that? Is that correct?
That is correct. I'll, I'll pull up the map so you can take a look at it. Um. Let's see, one of the. You know, one of the challenges, uh, changing zoning. Um, is. If you change the zoning to a. Uh, lower. Density zoning type, or you, you take something away with zoning, um, it could be considered takings. And so we have to evaluate that. Before making those, uh. Decisions. Whoops, let's see. Okay, I'm going to share my screen here.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, to the. Here's the cloverleaf at, uh, two fifty-five, Smo Boulevard. Um, and here is, uh, G and H Streets. There's residential medium on, uh, you know, the majority of this. And so we have not yet, uh, proposed, uh, down zoning that. The majority of this, I think, is already built out to its highest density. Um, and if that's the case, then there could be an argument for, uh, down zoning them. And allowing the, uh, um. You know, the existing. Uh, non-conforming status to carry forward. So that's, that's a possibility if the planning commission wanted to recommend down zoning this. Uh, but I think that, you know, at the end of the day, the challenge is that you still have, you know, all of the residences that are, that are there. That doesn't do anything to convert the uses over time. Um. And so, you know, one thing that we're, uh, also proposing to do is to have a, uh. Uh, commercial visitor serving overlay on this district. On a large proportion of this district. If we expanded that commercial visitor serving overlay. That could encourage conversion of uses, uh, in this residential zoning district. Um, and then, you know, that has the effect of, uh. You know, shifting your use away from purely residential, uh, if you had hotels there or something like that, or hostels. Um, bed and breakfast, that sort of thing. Instead of permanent residences, uh, there's a lower risk for, you know, for, uh, those individuals, families. Part of this, though, is also tied to making sure that we have enough adequately zoned properties elsewhere in the city. Uh, before we, you know, convert this completely away from residential. So that's a consideration as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, who, who wants to jump in? We're just here to discuss and. Pick away at this and pull out pieces and talk about. If nobody else is ready, I have a couple of small items to throw out. Uh, David. Green infrastructure pilot projects are described in eight point three point one eight. I'm very curious as to whether or not there are anything on the drawing table to. Let us start to see what these new kind of barrier reef type things, living shorelines, whatever they are. Is, uh, uh, any of them likely to happen in the next five years or so, or?
Yeah, I think, I think so. Uh, right now, um, you know, we've had, we've been working with the coastal conservancy to do a pilot project. On a living shoreline, uh, in spots around, uh, Klop Lake and, uh, um. Uh, enhancement marshes, or I'm sorry, the treatment marshes. Uh, on the leaning edge there, and I believe we just received, um. Uh, a grant from postal conservancy. Um, I wish Mark was here to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we just received a, a grant to, to do that project. And so, yeah, I think sometime in the next couple of years, we'll see a pilot project going.
That would be really exciting. And then I have another highlighted item, wetland fill allowed to protect sea level rise adaptation zone one. Uh, that seemed like it was a really sticky point with coastal commission in the past. Are you seeing a little bit of opportunity there? They're starting to realize that some wetlands are going to get filled for. Protection enhancement and, you know. I don't know where we are with that.
Um, I definitely think that's one of the areas where we're still, uh, trying to work through, um. The. Uh, you know, work through what their requirements, what they feel their requirements are and sort of are, um. You know, our, our desire locally to, to make sure that we can, you know, implement the projects that we need to. Um, there's, there's one irony about all of the sea level rise planning that we're doing and, and that's the, the majority of the projects that would be. Implemented to, uh, you know, to add protection, uh, to areas in the city. Are in the, the coastal commissions retain jurisdiction. And so we can say we're going to, uh, you know, create a wall. And, you know, and, you know, keep, keep the seawater out forever. And, and that's what our local coastal program says, but. Uh, it's unlikely that we'll ever get that approved through coastal development permit. And so, you know, I think that, you know, part of, part of the approach here is really to identify the issues, uh, you know, the areas where there is some. Uh, you know, friction or, or disagreement on, you know, what the, the best approach is. And, you know, I'm happy to say that, you know, our relationship with the coastal commission staff is. Um, you know, as good as I think it's ever been in terms of being able to work together and try and come up with solutions. Some of the comments that I edited out of this document before, um. Uh, before bringing it, you know, before the public, uh, had, you know, from the, the coastal commission started off with things like. Well, I don't know if, you know, this policy would, um, you know, be certifiable. But, um, here are some changes you might want to consider, uh, to at least move us in that direction. And so I think we have a really, uh, you know, good working relationship and, um, you know, have been. Uh, you know, identifying points of disagreement where we just recognize that, you know, uh, like that, you know, we're, we're. Not going to come to agreement, that reasonable people can disagree on, on certain topics, subs- you know, substantive topics. And so, uh, you know, there are other areas though, too, where they've been very, uh. Amenable to hearing and working with us. They, like, I think what I'm hearing you say is this. Can you phrase it in this way or propose it in this way? And that will probably get you where you want to go. So there's a little bit of meeting in the middle as well, some negotiation there.
I, I can't imagine that that's not a topic that's going to have to work its way out. I have one more item I'd like to throw out while I have the mic here. Um. Coastal trails in turn, in the public access section. Uh, I just can't imagine any levy that isn't, doesn't have public access unless there was some critical habitat. Protection issue going on and it, um. It's distressing that there are parts of the bay that you really can't publicly get to. And it, it's such a. A, a wonderful birder and, you know. Viewer kind of interface opportunity. Um, so I just like to think that if there are enhancement projects. That they would always incorporate some kind of public access, you know, and I'm thinking like, um, west of McDaniel's Lou, which is. I, I think it's mostly fish and wildlife property. That's, uh, limited access, hard to get to, um. And then some of the other areas that are private land backing up to a public levy. Well, if we are going to do anything to improve those public levies, I'd sure like to see public access along them. It just feels like such a perfect trail opportunity. They're already flat on top. They're walkable. You know, so I, I, I like to think that that gets incorporated into the language as this moves forward.
It, it absolutely does, uh, commission, uh, chair tag me, um. Uh, I can't point to it just off the top of my head, but that is absolutely the, um, the intent is that any levy that is, uh, built. Um, will have a trail on it. And in fact, uh, around the peninsula, any of the protective levies that, uh, or any projects that occur. Before the levies are built. Will have certain access point. Excuse me, certain access points that are required as a condition of approval that they provide a public easement, even if the levy isn't built. Just so that we'll have the easement to those levies spaced out so that you don't have to walk all the way to the end to get to the, the trail.
Yeah.
So that's, that circulation is definitely part of the consideration there.
Great, thank you. Who's next? Commissioner Figaroa, please.
Yeah, um, I just have a general question in respect to, um, how will sea level rise? Um, affect the coastal, um, the coastal boundary? Um, you know, will it become more fluid as, as there's inundation? Um, and how does this affect our, um, our development scenario? Um, in respects to existing structures and permitting. Um, and then for, for new projects as it, uh, you know, as we have any nation. Will that, you know, will that boundary change and with the permitting change because of the boundary change? Um, is there, has there been any discussion regarding that?
Uh, very, um, uh, sort of preliminary discussions at this point on that, um. You know, I, I. Do suspect that at, you know, some point the coastal zone boundaries will change. So, yeah, I can't, I can't really weigh in on that at this point, but, um, we'll certainly, uh, bring back information as we, as we learn more.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering if there's going to be protections for existing, you know, for existing homeowners in that area or business, you know, property owners in general. In respects to improvements, um, and so on and so forth. And, you know, not having to go through. Uh, you know, will it have to go through coastal development process or will it be grandfathered into the existing process?
Yeah, generally speaking, if, um, you know, if the zone is laid over onto a new property. Then it would be subject to those new requirements if they come in for a new development. Um, so, yeah, the answer is yes. Um, I, I do want to re-. Mind the planning commission knows that the way that the coastal zoning ordinance is structured right now. It's designed so that it has minimal overlap with the types of standards. Um, that are regulated under the land use code. And so theoretically, um, you know, if this is certified as we've, we've structured it. Theoretically, the, uh, the land use limitations that are associated with that zoning district. Before it had the coastal zoning overlay, uh, wouldn't change much. Uh, there'd be a little bit more procedure that they'd have to go through. They'd have to get a coastal development permit. Um, although, uh. You know, I, I, I want to take the opportunity to dispel the, uh, you know, the, the fear over coastal development permits. It's just another permit. It's a process that you have to go through and, you know, certainly there's added process associated with it, but it's, it's not like you can't get a coastal development permit. You can. But, yeah, so they, they, if a, if a property was included in the coastal zone and it wasn't before. It would be subject to additional, uh, you know, land use limitations or regulations, but, um. You know, we're trying to structure it so that they're, they're, you know. Uh, you know, they're reasonable. They're not onerous. And really the coastal act and, and the local coastal program is designed to. Protect coastal resources. Uh, the coastal commission has a long, uh, history of recognizing existing developed areas as. Not having much of an impact on coastal resources, so. I wouldn't think it'd be onerous.
Thanks.
Who else? Jump in if you have anything.
We can't hear you yet, Judy.
Can you hear me now? Okay, and my, my Zoom just lost the picture, so sorry about that. As, as usual, I have kind of a longer list of things I wanted to, to, to bring up. First, I'm, I'm really excited about a lot of the protection and the living shoreline definitions and the measured retreat definitions and the explanations are succinct and really understandable. And and, and exciting development for the whole big picture version of this. I really appreciate the transfer of responsibility. Language in here because it makes it clear that in the long term there, there are limits to what city infrastructure can protect, which is great. There's a bunch of other stuff, though, that, that is trickier, and I just wanted to bring it up at this point. Some of it has to do just with, with idly language stuff. Like talking about reclaimed former tidelands in the introduction. It's actually the, the bay that's going to reclaim those lands. And, and, and getting rid of this concept of reclaimed land would really help us going forward. This, this is language that was intended to promote development and filling and draining. And so I think at this juncture, we need to watch out for that language. And so that can be done with some super simple edits in the introduction. Other things that, that are a little bit problematic have to do with how we refer to housing in areas that may be inundated in the long run. But not in the short or middle run in that, in those scenarios that you put forward. And so referring to an area as you know, low income housing right now, when we're talking about the longer term or the midterm. That stuff is going to change or could change. And by, by referring to that housing in ways that imply that it must be preserved and that development needs to be potentially actually allowed or promoted new development in those areas. That, that's, I think, a discussion that we need to have in a public forum. And that needs to be robust and time bound. I get the idea that you don't want to undermine the economic value of those properties or disinvest to the disbenefit of current residents, but doing anything that's going to promote new development in those areas is is problematic. And so I think looking at the kinds of zoning issues that you were talking about before, David, is something that we really need to give a closer look to. And I think there's a lot of nuance that we can do in zoning and permitting that we haven't really explored yet. And you started to touch on it today, and I think that that's a good thing. There's also some other language in there that needs a bit of robust definition. There's a lot of places where the document refers to doing something to the extent practicable or to the extent feasible. And you give one really quick definition in terms of cost benefit analysis. But I think that there's a, there's a lot more that needs to be done there. Practicable and feasible for whom? Benefits for whom? Costs to whom? And at what point do we need to have some kind of a, of a trigger, a signal that it's time to do that analysis? Right now it says if an area is deemed to be inhabitable, uninhabitable, or I can't remember what the word was. It, it's, it's time to move out. But who gets to make that determination? And what if it's contested by owners or residents or anybody else? So I, I'd love to see a document that has some, some clear definitions and some idea of whose costs and whose benefits and when we need to actually look at them. And I have a bunch more comments that probably will keep people sitting here for ages, but I will save you from them and just say that I, I think we really need to have a more robust public discussion of what's going to happen on the peninsula. What's going to be allowed when? What's going to be disallowed? What's going to be subsidized? And certainly, you know, you said that sea level rise planning is not hazard mitigation planning. But when we're looking at the middle and long term, I think that there's there is a risk of tsunami and liquefaction during seismic events that we really do need to consider in conjunction with our sea level rise analysis. And we have an opportunity to do that now. Obviously, if we're looking at, you know, the sea level rise section of the document, we're not looking at the tsunami section of the document, but the decisions that we make could save lives or put lives at risk. And so I think that that, that formal separation is something that we need to see as, you know, a formal separation in a document and not a separation in how we're thinking about protecting our community. So that's mine.
Thank you, Judith. Anybody else? Well, David, I think that we've talked it out. Do you have any other thoughts or questions of the commission? David, you're muted.
Thank you. Happens to the best of us, right, Judy? We do have a couple of people in attendance, and one of them has raised their hand.
Okay, great. Bring them on.
Okay. Jen, you're in the meeting?
Can you hear me? Hi.
We can.
Thanks. This is very interesting. One thing, I don't know if you have the experience of people watching online. But when they do watch online, the lag time is quite, is quite a bit off. So people are trying to watch online and then call in. I've just learned that, you know, you have to call in well in advance and it's hard to predict, right? So anyway. So my name is Jennifer Carlton with Humboldt Baykeeper, and I don't think I I've been at Planning Commission in a while, and I think there's some new planning commissioners, so that's great. I just have a few thoughts. So first of all, this has come a long way since it was first proposed. It's pretty interesting to see the evolution. I think that calling it the peninsula is really confusing for the people who have no idea what's going on here. I think you mean South G Street, is that right? When you say the peninsula?
Yes, that's exactly what they're referring to, all the way down to the treatment plant.
Okay, it's just, it's confusing for people who don't see that in the report and haven't been at all the meetings and, and whatnot. So I was even a little confused because when I hear peninsula, I'm thinking Samoa Peninsula. So you're talking about the future peninsula that you're thinking of creating, I guess. So I think that the section eight point three point two seven on, or no, point two eight, sorry. Prohibiting subdivision in zone one is an excellent provision policy. I think new development in zone one might need a little more thought and, and investigation in part because you know, the idea of putting in new shoreline protective structures in eight point three point two nine. It could be a little bit misleading because the coastal commission is not likely to allow that going forward. And I'm not, you know, I don't represent them, so I just know that generally speaking, they're all over California, not allowing new shoreline protective structures for new development. So if people are going to be developing, make, doing new development and then hoping in the future that they'll be able to build a new shoreline protective structure, that could lead to a lot of problems. The other issue is and David referred to this a little bit about how, you know, this is all in the coastal commission jurisdiction, but you can't really rely on building a shoreline protective structure parcel by parcel, or it's, I mean, it's not going to function, right? So you're going to have to build a shoreline protective structure. You know, all at once, unless you're trying, you know, your aim is for something like sidewalks in McKinleyville, where every house has to build one little bit of sidewalk. And then maybe in a hundred years, we'll all have sidewalks continuous down the street. And you know, it's just problematic. And then the other thing I wanted to ask about was let's see, I need to look at my document here. I believe it's figure, I was wondering where do you find figure eight dash two? It has to do with contaminated sites and where polluted sites. And it is where is it mentioned here? Eight point three point seven. Potential pollutant sources. It says figure eight dash three shows the known potential pollutant sources, et cetera, and that the city shall work with landowners and regional partners to remove and relocate pollutant sources to outside of potential sea level areas. And as you probably know, that is the main focus of Humboldt Baykeepers work, like with the Little Lake Industries property and other, you know, former industrial sites that are that have no responsible parties and no one's actively trying to redevelop them. And so they're just sitting there polluted and so my, my question is about the figure eight dash three. I'm, I don't know if it's, if it's something that's in development and it would be presented later, but my comment is that it should make it really clear that it's not showing areas that have no pollution, you know, it's not a presence absence type of a figure because I know it says known potential pollutant sources, but when you make a map, most people look at that map and say, oh, well, look at all the places that aren't polluted. Which, you know, isn't necessarily the case. So that's it for now, and thanks for taking my comments and be interested to see how this evolves.
Thank you, Jennifer, for being part of this process. David, is there anybody else? You're on mute still.
Yeah, thank you. There is, let's see. Kristin, you're on.
Can you hear me? Hi, this is Kristin Kenyon with the North Coast District Office of the Coastal Commission. I'm been working with David probably since maybe the first time I saw these policies were in, in 2017. And I really appreciate how closely the city has been working with us and how much progress we've made. And it was really interesting to hear all your all perspective on it. And you guys got me thinking a lot. There's definitely a lot of intricacies with how shoreline armoring is regulated under the coastal act and and wetland fill for that matter. And I encourage you to check out the draft residential adaptation guidance for sea level rise adaptation that's on the commission's website. And pretty soon, we're going to also have some critical infrastructure sea level rise adaptation guidance that'll be coming out. I think in Arcata, it's particularly interesting how how it works with the policies because it's a different coastal scenario. I mean, you're not on the open coastline. So I think some of the stuff that you would want to do on the peninsula might not even really constitute shoreline armoring. So I, I wonder if there's ways to be consistent with the coastal act policies and still achieve a longer term retreat scenario in that area. There's three ways really to permit armoring under the coastal act. There's kind of a right to armoring for existing structures in certain cases. That doesn't mean, you know, new structures can't get armoring. It's just they don't have a right to it. And they have to be consistent with all of the policies of the coastal act. And that can be really tricky. You know, there's a policy that basically says you don't want to build anything new development that's going to cause you to have to armor along a bluff or a cliff that puts a stop to allowing armoring in a lot of the coast of California. And there's also the wetland fill policies. And they they allow wetland fill for only certain enumerated uses that are like coastal dependent or resource dependent. Nature study is one of those. And that's really how we've permitted the Bay Trail in Wellins. And then also in terms of what, what scenario to look at and what map to use, we really encourage local governments to look at a range of sea level rise scenarios and to choose different ones depending on what you're permitting. Because different developments have different anticipated lives, you know, when we, we permitted the Bay Trail. Some of it's really low elevation, but we also look at whether, you know, there's adaptive capacity and, and what are the consequences if it fails to adapt? And with the trail, it just didn't seem like there was going to be big consequences to like life or safety or their environment if the trail flooded. So we didn't use as long of turn, term of a seal of a rise scenario for that. And, yeah, so if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. And it was great to listen to you all.
I have a question right off, Kristin, if you don't mind. Are you locally assigned? And do you have public access opportunities for follow up questions?
Yeah, feel free to send, shoot me an email. I'm in the Arcade office, although I've been working from home. So the best way to reach me is, is by my coastal commission email, which is kristin.kenyon@coastal.ca.gov. And you can find me on the coastal commission contact page too, on the website.
So if anybody wants to follow up with you, they can go to the California Coastal Commission webpage and search for you and then email you. And you are assigned locally to this jurisdiction?
Yeah, I oversee LCP work in Mendocino, Humboldt and Delnor counties.
Okay. You must be busy.
Yeah, luckily, we have a lot of updates happening right now, so.
Are there any commission questions of Kristin? Well, seeing none at this point, thank you very much for participating tonight.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a one more. Let's see, there we go. Justin, you're in the meeting.
Hello, my name is Justin Delgado. I am a student at Humboldt State University studying geology and environmental policy and planning. And I was just wondering with the with regards to considering the sea level rise level at four point one feet. As the conservative estimate, if there was also the consideration that because we are located on the Cascadia subduction zone that given a rupture on that fault. Arcata could actually lose elevation on the accretionary prism. And so our our standard elevation that we're basing sea level rise off of could be changed as a result of that. So I was just wondering if that was at all. In in consideration.
Sounds like a David question.
Okay, I can I can address that. Justin, I apologize. I somehow I think made you a. Panelist, and so I'm going to try and put you back as an attendee. If you get disconnected, please feel free to join again. Yeah, I'd be happy to address any of the comments made by the the speakers if the commission is is interested. To Justin's point, no, we haven't taken any consideration at this point into, you know, what what happens as a result of a Cascadia event. It's not a, you know, again, it's it's a little bit outside of the the planning scenario. And I think that, you know, this is actually the first time that I've heard that we would would lose elevation after a Cascadia event. I've I know that there the bay is is I've heard, not a geologist, but I play one on TV. I've heard that the bay is going to respond differently, that portions of it will actually rise up. And I was under the understanding actually that the arcade bay would rise in elevation. That it's been, you know, through subduction, it's been creeping down and also through. Other factors that it's been being compressed, and so Cascadia event would actually rise up. I also, you know. Assume that, you know, if we had a Cascadia event that, you know, sea level rise would be sort of a, you know, an afterthought, at least initially. But we don't. We don't have estimates of changes in sea level rise related to that particular event. Again, I think they're a little outside of the scope of this planning work. So, you know, I hope I've I've addressed that if the commission has follow up questions on that, I'd be happy to pursue some, you know, additional detail on that that I don't have at my disposal at this point.
Well, it's an interesting consideration for sure. Do you have any more public comment, David?
It looks like all the other public, all the commenter, all the people in the public attendance have commented, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, thank you, public, for participating tonight. At this point, David, are we just looking for last thoughts and or wrapping up on this topic for now? Or thinking about future dates that we'll be readdressing?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're we're, you know, I don't have anything else prepared. If there are any final questions, I'd be happy to, or last thoughts to include. I've taken in notes on. You know, the public comment on on the commissioner's comments today, we'll start to incorporate those. I I think the, you know, one item I wanted to go back to just, you know, before we leave tonight, the Commissioner Mayor, Vice Chair Mayor had pointed out that, you know, this may warrant another. You know, public study session and, you know, I do want to acknowledge that we've had several, but obviously this is a really important. Matter and, you know, I'm happy to to try and schedule something where we could have a study session for the planning commission and try and generate some. You know, some interest among the the property owners down in the affected area and some of the the residents. You know, so that you can hear directly from them as well.
And are you speaking specifically about zoning issues along what we're calling the peninsula now?
Yeah, zoning or or concepts about, you know, land use limitations or, you know, not allowing, you know, future development, those those sorts of, you know, discussion points that came up today.
Yeah. I don't know if the commission and and staff would be interested in actually. Doing that with city council because we are going to have three out of five brand new council members. People who I I'm not sure actually have a background in in land use issues per se. And if they're going to be. Addressing those issues, then certainly it seems like a study session. Another one with the council would make sense after those new council members are put. Onto the council and are ready to gear up to consider some some potentially significant zoning and maybe rezoning issues.
We've got a, you know, we've got a pretty extensive public engagement plan. Maybe it would be helpful for, you know, the. Next meeting, I'll bring that forward and and share that with you. You know, each of the different. For. For discussing, you know, these items, you know, has its strengths and weaknesses and, you know, some of the limitations that this forum in particular has, you know, the public gets a few minutes to speak. There's not a lot of working going on. There's this big presentation, and then each person kind of pops off to think, you know, what's coming to their mind at the time. You know, I think, you know. A study session is sort of a, you know, step down. It's a little more informal. But I think a lot of these really warrant having more of a working session. And so some of the some of the engagement that we have planned is is more workshops and, you know, town hall style. Meetings where where, you know, the communication can be a little more free flowing. At some point, there certainly will be before, you know, the the LCP has adopted, you know, another joint study session. I think to address this topic, we I would recommend that we have something a little less formal.
Okay, well. If that's it on that topic, we'll move on to our last business item. And that's just about the scheduled planning commission meeting for December 22.
Yeah, it's just an opportunity to formally cancel that meeting if the commission would like to.
Yes, would we do that with a motion and all of that? Okay.
Yeah.
If there's a motion to cancel the December 22 meeting, let's do that.
I'll make a motion to cancel December 22.
I'll second it.
All right. Would you like to do the roll call, David?
Absolutely. Commissioner Barstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Visage Elcock?
Yes.
Commissioner Figaro?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Tagney?
Yes, it's unanimous, so we will not see anybody on December 22. And now we can move on to correspondence and communications. Are there any from staff?
I have just one thing to share with you, speaking of public engagement. We are, as you're all well aware, working through the strategic and fill redevelopment planning work that we're doing. You know, major updates to the general plan. We're talking about some targeted rezones in the Arcade Gateway area. We're hosting a listening session is what we're calling it, an opportunity to bring folks together and. You know, talk about the issues, talk about how folks are dealing with COVID and what the important issues are for them and in their lives that we should be incorporating into. You know, our our planning efforts, you know, for for the future here. It's happening on the 17th Thursday. At 5:30. It's a Zoom webinar. You can get the information on our webpage here. This is just at the bottom. If you go to our main website and scroll to the bottom, we have upcoming events. And here's this event. You can find more information by following that link. So love to have the public join us for this. Tell us what you think and what you're going through.
Thank you, David. David, is this an opportunity to remind commissioners about reapplying for their positions?
Absolutely. We do have three commissioners who received letters from us informing you that your your terms are expiring. And so would like to strongly encourage you to reapply. The vacancies have also been advertised, and so if there are members of the community who would like to apply as well, like to encourage them to do that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any commission communications at this point? Seeing none, let's adjourn. And we'll see you all in the new year.